And then other times of the day or days of the week that it is not as used to its optimal level. So interestingly, at least those are more in the mornings and has potential impact for English traffic.
Rush hour.
You mean that they're thinking about putting something, sliding something into that empty time?
If you wanted to, if you were a professor there and you want to have a class, you'd have no problem proposing the class for nine o'clock in the morning. There was some of these morning, right at rush hour where they were not utilizing their space, but then other times of the day later in the morning, early afternoon where they were basically just packing them in. So they talked about redistributing the class, trying to make the space more efficient because they determined that their overall usage of the space was not very efficient and that they didn't really need for classroom space. They had surplus of space, but because of scheduling gives the impression that you don't have space. And they, it was very interesting how they did do analysis of our surplus space for classrooms. They identified deficits for athletic facilities and for library, but excess capacity for like student life and some of the other components.
So they're going to work with PHB on Wells Street?
Right, so Donna's going to be getting them all the traffic information at least because Sasaki who's doing the planning work is working with a transportation consultant. So they'll consider or take into consideration any information that we may have on that intersection. Hopefully both town and Redes will be able to understand that or how each impacts each other.
Well, the other thing was the driveways.
Right.
Because right now there are three ways into the campus. There's the main alley.
Right.
There's the one that goes by, there's the Philatelic Museum, and then there's one down by the gym and the auditorium.
Right.
They're cutting off that connection between the two.
It's not a circle anymore.
It's not a circle anymore. So to get to any place on the campus where there's park, any kind of significant parking, now you'd be coming into the entrance.
Right.
Around behind the gymnasium. So the question is that's going to funnel all of the cars in and out of, because the other two become mostly vestigial.
Right.
So now all the cars are shifted towards Chestnut Street.
And the consultant, Sasaki identified that, and I talked with her after, that the alignment of that northern entrance is problematic. You have some wetlands, a little strain, you then have the elevated field. And where cars coming south on Wells, you can see how they just slip right in. It's like an off-ramp onto the campus. So having that as the main entrance, they're going to have to work out some details as far as how they're going to coordinate and improve access because it's not at a traditional T yet. It is slanted.
So they're, they don't basically want people going in the other two entrances?
It's ceremonial now, really.
Yeah.
And there will be, is there a connection now between the loop and the, and that other parking lot?
Yeah.
And they're cutting that off?
They're cutting that off.
So the main, on the main campus where you go behind the academic, the administration buildings, there's two large parking lots. That's what they proposed making a green to make it quiet.
So they have to find other parking because it sounds those, I mean, it's.
A lot of times those are torrid. Yeah.
Behind the museum.
Yeah.
That's where it's going to go.
Oh, it's where it's going to go.
So they're, they're going to expand some places and then behind the museum, that may be a location for like resident parking where people may have a car and just park there.
At some point, we might want to consider thinking about bringing onboard a land planner to help us assess the impacts. I mean, I'm not sure, I don't think it's now, but especially when Regis East comes into the picture, because it's not in the picture now for obvious reasons. But later on, it might be. And it's interesting that their consultant, Regis' consultant is Sasaki. I happen to run into, just to tell the board, I happen to run into John Hollywood. Does everybody remember John Hollywood?
Yeah.
John Hollywood no longer works for Sasaki. He's got his own land planning company in Concord. And he said that he'd be interested in working with the planning board on, you know, to be their land planning consultant on larger scale projects. So I just throw that out. We might want to consider him at some point in the mix or somebody like him to help us with some of these bigger scale issues. Just throw that out for information. He was pretty good on, I think, on Highland Meadows.
Yeah.
Mostly it has a history with the town, so I kind of like it.
I mean, the Highland Meadows is a nice, is a nice plan. I, if, I don't, is he responsible for it, do you think?
He wasn't the first designer, but he was the implementation guy. So he did all the detail work on that. That's what I remember. One presentation after another from John Hollywood, so.
We have aspiring, he works so hard, he works so hard, he just definitely does his best. Do a nice job.
So like you said, I'm going to be getting a copy and I'll distribute that. I'm sure it's also going to be getting the air, airwaves on Boston Cables and some of those film. Just an update for our next meeting on the 16th of October. I emailed early evening the list of scenic road trees. There's about 18 trees that the tree warden identified. All are either dead or, or dying. They've already been posted. So 8:15 on the 16th, that's when our hearing will be and the tree ward will be in attendance. Also just want to let you know that 144 Beaver, we have been continuing this due to some negotiations going on on the settlement and then also they had appealed ConCon determination. DP overruled ConCon's determination and so they're moving ahead with finalizing their settlement. They are lining things up so that they can be in front of the board on the 30th and this looks like it last, last hurdle has been overcome so that we can try to put this, this to that. And also for the 30th, Highland Meadows is going to be coming in with the proposal to change the construction access for Highland Meadows. They think that they're at a point where construction vehicles have reduced and that actually all the foundation holes have already been dug for all the units so that much of the higher weight vehicles are no longer needed. They still need some, of course, they need to remove material, but the amount is reduced such that they'd like to be able to finish the front area on Boston Post Road. So they're going to be coming back in front of the board with that request.
Quick question, you're going to email that list of the trees, the tree wardens, are we, in the past?
It already went out.
Okay, in the past, we each broke up the assignments and looked at, are we going to do that again or is it just, remember how we used to all carefully go and look at trees?
Yeah.
Do we think we need to, is my question?
I don't know.
I mean, I never found one that wasn't dead.
I never found one, well, they all, they did find, yeah.
I mean, it was from, he found one that's, like, on his last gap.
Yeah, but then there were others that were a little bit more, I don't know. I mean, how many are there? Aren't that many, right?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. I mean, sometimes we've dealt with lists of like 50, right?
Yeah. You saw the order list.
I know, Nate David, he'd love to do that.
Well, you know, basically people could do like five. There's like two on Ash, two on Chestnut, one on Coman, three, four, five, six, seven on Glen, two on Highland. I mean, there's, geographically, we could divide things up and I could just put them into blocksing here. These are ones that are close by and if someone wants to volunteer to take them.
Yeah, that's what we did before.
Yeah.
So we'd break it up and so different people would drive by and look at different trees.
So why don't I send that out again via email as sort of like a broken up and people can just get back to me saying, I'll handle group one, two, and three.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Before we get on to our first agenda item, we had a request from Lisa Wallach who lives at Three Out of a Wild. In Other Business at the end, I have this basically as a administrative approval. She asked if we could bump this up and handle it at first so that, you know, she could know if you can help. So I want to see if the board would not contain bumping that from Other Business at the end to handle it upfront.
Yeah, that's fine.
So in your packet, I included a blow up of the area. This is the overall landscape plan.
Is this going to be discussed?
Yes.
If it stands out on the draft?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So the, the small retaining wall that basically is at the beginning of the, the actual lot for Three Out of a Wild. Right now, there's three shrubs and they're proposing removing those shrubs and replacing them with two, three spruce. So it's in an area that there's already existing evergreen trees that were planted as part of the subdivision special permit, flexible subdivision special permit that are on the 102 property, but were required for the screening. So these are basically just extending this line of evergreens that's already there. And, you know, fits within the context of the plantings that were there. It's on the property and provides additional screening. I was going to recommend to board at the end of the meeting in Other Business that I think is appropriate for modifying the plan.
There was, there's another, what is this ghostly thing right there? What was that meant to be?
I think that was just a shrub because in this location, there's, there's only shrubs that are there.
There's actually four shrubs and we're just sliding those forward closer to the wall so we can get the trees further back from the wall so there's not a root problem to the wall.
Can anybody ready to move that? I move that we approve this additional three trees.
Speaker. All favor?
Aye.
All right. Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
What kind of a tree is a consular tree? That came up at, at Regis College.
Yeah, sir.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a Chinese, almost like a Chinese pear tree.
Oh, it's, oh, it's a flowering tree?
It flowers sometimes, not all the time though, but it has very bright pear shaped type of yellow leaves and a fall.
Those are the ones that are around.
Around Regis.
Yeah, they're, right, they're, they look like a linden, you know, linden trees? They're very similar to the same except the leaf is just a little different shape, more like a pear shape.
Okay.
Will it fruit out?
It will.
Excuse me? Will it fruit out as well?
No. No, it doesn't.
Thanks.
Thank you very much and thank you for taking us on. Appreciate it. Aye.
Okay, we're ready to start the site plan review for my modification of 17 Columbine Road. Before we start, I've got a question.
Uh huh.
This came up at the sidewalk.
Yes.
This is a non-conforming lot where we've got encroachment in the setback. When that house was built, was there a variance in special permit credit? Because I looked on the town website and I couldn't find it.
My thing is right.
Yeah.
Want to comment?
Yeah.
At, at the time, since they built it, we, they did not require, you should get a variance if the area being disturbed, like if you didn't disturb the area that was in the setback. So because we never touched that part of it, it didn't need a variance at the time. That's how it was done.
But the building actually encroaches in the setback.
It, but because we didn't just, the way that it used to be done 10 years ago when the house was built was that if, if you didn't disturb the area, we didn't put that there. It was already existing, but since we didn't disturb that area, it wasn't considered.
Because you added a second story.
You mean the house was, there was already a foundation there, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, so you didn't, you didn't.
It was a ranch.
Okay, you didn't increase.
The foundation.
The non-conformity.
Right. We did increase the foundation because all of the.
You did not.
In today's standards, we did, but then, and, yep, in those standards, we didn't. As long as you didn't touch anything that was in the setback, it wasn't, there was no need for a variance at that time.
Right, so the foundation line stayed the same.
In the, in the setback.
That side.
In the setback, so you didn't increase the, the non-conformity.
Correct.
But it actually did because that sunroom, that was not part of the original.
Yeah, it was there.
It was?
Yeah.
Okay, my understanding was that it extend, that line extended into the setback.
We didn't, we didn't touch anything on, on that side. We just did the garage.
You just did the, oh.
Okay, I just wanted to get that clear because now we're looking at, at a proposal that's going to increase the encroachment into the setback.
Right.
Okay.
This is the building and some factors and determine that we're coming for us for a special permit rather than a variance, correct?
Us first site plan and then ZBA for a special permit.
But this is, did we have a 2002 COA?
Yeah, we did. But, but that's, that's what puzzled me because I didn't know why there was no variance, but Diana just clarified why there was no variance or special permit needed. Now, we're in this conundrum where we've got, where we're looking at a proposal that increases the encroachment in setback.
So this, this addition is actually goes into the setback.
It goes further.
It doesn't, it doesn't go, no.
It extends out.
Or maintains the line.
But the line is not parallel with the setback line.
But the line is, the line is already over the setback, but you're not going any.
Yeah, because the, because the foundation line is not parallel with the setback line. So the encroachment actually increases both in terms of length and in terms of proximity to the sideline. That's, that's.
So this is, this is, that's, he doesn't plan and how you do the right things.
And so it's.
Okay, so where?
No, it's kind of small.
So it's small, but it's pretty small.
But, but you see how the, you see how the lines aren't, aren't actually parallel.
This is, this is one.
You're using third book. And I hope. So this, this actually, but whether we agree with that.
Yeah, and that's the, that's part of the addition.
Yeah. It's very small. That's, that's where we start to get into this huge issue. What do we decide? So I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Get those issues clear. The other issue that was, that I think it should be, we should consider is that in order to make this addition happen, they're going to have to blast a ledge.
We have a letter in the packet from the contractor that says they don't have to blast.
They don't have to blast, but they have to, so they'll have to.
They have to hammer out the ledge.
Okay, and some of that jackhammering will happen in the setback. No? You don't think so or you don't know for sure?
Well, yeah, you would.
You would. I think it would because the ledge goes up that way.
It's not exactly known for sure. Because the ledge that's exposed is outside the setback, but.
But you're, you can assume that for foundations, you're going to probably have to go down. You're going to have to do something.
Physically, what's there is, you know, it's hard to know whether there's ledge underneath where the foundation would be.
Right. Okay.
If they didn't extend the porch at all and just had deck there with a new porch, the new covered porch with that little tiny segment, would they need to come for us if it's not really, is it that structure?
It's a structure.
Is it, is it still considered enough of a structure?
It's a structure.
Okay.
But if it was a terrace.
Then it wouldn't be a structure.
It wouldn't be a structure.
Right, then it would just be a patio.
If I read this carefully, it's just, it's a little bit of the proposed porch addition that goes over the.
Can I?
Yes.
Go ahead.
My name is David Payne and I'm representing the owners, Jimmy Guitasowski and Dan Kraus. And I need to show you a little bigger plan here. So are we talking about the, well, I guess we have to.
We have to.
Because we were primarily here for the patio expansion, but, so the existing porch is in white there.
That's, that's the way it is now.
Yes. No, I'm sorry, the existing porch is in gray there. What would be added on is in white.
And, and tan.
Tan is, is.
Is the deck.
Is the deck.
That's a structure.
Okay, so there's the setback line, here's the card line of the house as it is.
Right.
This woman, I don't know who.
She was, she's the one that did the house initially. She built the house initially.
Or built the, the above porch.
Kind of re, redid it.
Fortuitous to have you there. So were we to be allowed through ZBA to add on here? Yes, there, right now, the ledge is shown here.
Why do you say yes? You need a special permit. I mean, it's not an automatic yes.
No, I know. I'm saying we have to go before ZBA and, and get your approval as well. So to be allowed to add on to the porch there. And you can see the exposed ledge is here. We don't know what's underneath here, but we have, we'd have to dig a foundation, extend it out. It's a four foot addition. So as this gentleman said, you know, it's, it's slightly askew, the, the building line is, so it, it is a four feet plus maybe another foot wider into the, like further encroachment.
Where's the neighbor?
Neighbor's over here.
I know, but where's her, where's her, her building line? Where's, where's the?
Building line right here.
No, that's the problem.
Where's her house?
Where is, where is her house line? It's right about here, isn't it?
Not quite that close.
Pretty close.
It's pretty close.
Okay, so you're telling me that you're going to go four feet wide and, and one foot deep into the setback?
Yes.
And that amount of space is worth?
Yes, it is.
To go through.
It's not four feet, though, David. It's, it's the, it's this white plus the tan.
No, he just said four feet, so.
It's the porch itself.
The porch itself.
And the deck itself is also up in the air.
Yes.
Right, so it's.
Because that's a structure.
Plus six, so it's about 12, eight or 12 feet.
Like from, from the setback line to there, about two feet. So, so the ex, that extra two feet that you're, that you're, that you're going over the setback is worth it?
Yes, it is because the, you know, the porch itself and the size it is, there's a door there, they can't put proper furniture and to turn this into a porch so they could put a table in, a screen porch, it's just as tight as it is, so.
They don't want to like go out like that and then back in. This is, this is what you've already, this is what you've already got.
That's right.
So, so if you, if you went like that and that, you wouldn't have to go to the ZBA?
Correct.
Right.
That's right.
Which seems to me to make a lot of sense.
Except it, you know, architecturally, it doesn't make any sense. Right, right, you've got a room now that has this kind of dent in it, you can't really put the furniture against it, you know, it's just.
Actually, I think you would still need to get a special.
It's an exposed porch.
You still need to get a special permit even if they don't.
So it's an.
Have you been to the site?
Right. Here's the back of the house.
The lot is existing now.
But the structure's not.
So here, here's the porch as it is now. So we're just proposing to bring that out.
They got these three bays and have the gable go like that. So you get a, you get a double gable, this gable projects out. You can do that. You're laughing.
Well, I know, I mean, there are many other options, of course, but.
Really?
This is, this is the, this is the preferred.
They like this one.
Yeah, this is the preferred option. You know, it's a small room as it is, so if you start encroaching, I mean, if you start pinching it in, it, you know, it doesn't achieve what, what the owners are looking for.
Would the world come to an end if, you know, if it was that wide as opposed to that wide?
And so would the world come to the end if, if we extended this out another four feet?
I don't know because the neighbor is so close and you're jackhammering out ledge to do it.
We're not jackhammering.
Well, what you're.
We're drilling and.
Drilling, drilling.
Still, that's not jackhammering.
For less than a day.
Well, we don't know.
That's the, that's what the contractor told us.
The question is whether this is more on, what is the term?
Detrimental.
No, it's more, pardon?
Detrimental.
Detrimental, thank you very much, than, than.
Than what is common.
Than doing something like that. I mean, that's.
I, I always, I feel like I'd rather have the ZBA do that.
Well, I would too.
Isn't that what they're, yeah, isn't that what they're good at, you know?
I absolutely agree with you, but in this case, we're, you know, what, what, we need to work out, this is the first one that's come down the pike. We need to work out what we communicate to the zoning board of appeals.
Is this, you're saying that under the, the, the new bylaw, if it were passed, this would be a problem for us rather than, or you're saying that it's a problem for us?
It's, it's here today.
What, but we never, we never had one of these?
No, this is the first one that I, that we've actually had since the court ruling that took the variance out of the ballgame.
Okay, so they don't have to go for a variance?
No, then all they need to do is get a special permit and then, and the sequence is site plan review, special permit. So here we are.
So they, you mean to say that they would, would just approve it?
I don't know. But what are we, they're looking to us to make recommendations to them. This is what Mark was telling me.
And they usually look for hardship if you're going to.
That's a variance.
It's a variance, not a permit.
Right, what I'm saying, but we, what are our guidelines for the special permit? Do we look for hardship? This is not a hardship. Sorry, it's not a hardship. So I don't know if that's what our basis of looking at this is.
Harsh from his perspective, is curious.
It's not, we're not considering hardship. We can't do that.
See, that's not really, that's not, that's not, that's the zoning board.
But that, that won't even be the ZBA. This will be about.
It's not a variance.
Determining whether or not this is more or less detrimental to the neighborhood.
And instead of the ZBA deciding that, which is usually their job, we're, we're getting this.
No, we get to, we recommend what we, whether we think that this is an appropriate expansion.
More. Pam, you went to sidewalk?
I didn't.
So that's why.
The neighbor's house is extremely close. It's extremely close.
Yeah, so I.
And she's not thrilled about it either, by the way.
I, yeah.
And, you know.
I'm not, I hate to be an old pot, but it's always like compounding an initial mistake by continuing to make more mistakes.
I, I'm not saying that I'm for it or against it, I was just hoping that, that we could.
Kick the key.
I know what you meant to, to ZBA.
You're stuck now. You're stuck. This is what I've been.
Well, from the neighbor's perspective, I mean, there's going to be no more impact really, you know, by, because it's, all right, maybe it's a foot closer, six inches, foot closer, otherwise extending not in her direction, but out. The same evergreen trees that are here are remaining. We can plant more undergrowth to, to screen it even more if that is a concern. There's no drainage impact. The minor impact will be at the time that it's drilled for, you know, for, for the stone removal, you know, a few hours of that and then.
If, right, if, John's saying, if.
If that's necessary and then during construction and then it's done.
Yeah.
But you are leaving a larger mass in the aftermath.
I mean, it isn't necessarily before what was once open air sort of looking through, now is occupied by a structure, so.
Four feet more.
Yes, but that's significant when, when you're really close, so.
But it's shielded though, right?
Yeah.
Why not go back-
Why not listen to what Al is saying?
Why not, why not do a double gable and just have an extra corner in the, in the screen porch, you can still project that.
The screen, the screen porch, because we have plans for furniture that won't fit in there, and it just aesthetically got a dent right in there that just, just-
Well.
You know, and, and the question is, is how much does this really matter, we're talking about a foot or two?
What, you're looking for a recommendation from us, let's, let's be realistic, you need a permit from the zoning board of appeals to do anything. You're looking for a recommendation from us. So, we're suggesting a way to mitigate the impact by at least staying outside the setback line. And you're saying that your furniture arrangement, the one that you have, is not quite-
Well, the whole point, the whole point of us extending this to four feet is for the furniture and the living space in that area, that's the whole point of doing it.
Yeah, but what if we recommend against the permit and you don't get anything?
I'm just, I'm just at a loss to understand what, what the impact is of, there's virtually, from what I can see, no impact at all in terms of, it's shielded, it's, it's, it's a matter of foot, it's just hard for me to understand why that would be an issue.
So, find this-
And it's, it's, it's an issue for us, it's an issue for us.
What if it was six feet? What if it was eight feet? The next guy that comes in can say, "Look, it's only eight feet." What if?
What if he spoke, I don't know if they had an opportunity to speak to the neighbor.
We've tried, we have made multiple outages to the neighbor, the neighbor unfortunately had sat, had her husband pass away a couple months ago. We've tried multiple times, we've thrown notes, we haven't been able to engage her, she's not responded, it's been, it's been frustrating.
She has, she's not in favor of it, Tom.
But maybe you don't completely-
One communication she's made is, pardon?
Maybe you should completely understand what it is that we're-
And what she communicates is me, and the one time that, that I was able to actually have the conversation with her shortly before she died was, is that at one point we had talked about, topping off some trees or cutting down some trees, and so we went over specifically and said, "We won't, we absolutely will not do anything with trees, period." And the comment from her at the time was, "We're not going, you know, if that's not, if, if you're not gonna do that, I don't think there's going to be any other issues." It's what she told me. And so something has changed, we haven't given her, I mean, I don't know what, what new information she's basing this on, you know, and-
You have to understand also that no matter how much a neighbor necessarily approves and comes in and says, "I love this project," the decision is not theirs, we take their opinion into, yeah, so whether she was totally for it or totally against, you know, we would consider that. But I'm concerned about the gradual nibbling away of bylaws that we have, and this is already a mistake, and now we're, we just wanna compound.
Basically.
Yeah, and that's a big deal to be in this town, a really big deal.
That's the precedent, that's the, you know, someone else comes and says, "You did it for him, why didn't you do it for me?" and that kind of thing. So, let's sort of hold that for a second, you also proposed additional lighting.
Yes.
Outdoor lighting. Can you show us what you're talking about there?
Well, the only additional lighting is, were we to be allowed to add the four-foot addition to the porch, there would be a door coming off the end, and we'd put a light there.
So now she's gonna light that she didn't have.
It wouldn't be a light.
So what is the specialty light that's-
Now, maybe not when you live there, but things get sold, other people move in, they change the bylaws, it's a guarantee.
But you're required by code to have a light.
Is there a door there?
So if we get a shield, it could be a shi-
That's funny, I don't even know if there's a light or not.
No, there's not, currently, there's a, there's a door on this end, but there's no light there, I don't think.
Okay.
I'll have a look, so there's, there's light there, but there's not a light there. See, this is the door that's currently, and the other lights, to answer your question, sir, there are gonna be proposed, there's a cap to this wall, there's a little retaining wall, and so the underside of that cap shining down, this is only eighteen inches high, above the terrace level, there'd be downlights, and then over here is where the owners wish to put a barbecue, and there'd be a specialty light, which I have shown a picture of, which is downcast, it doesn't glare and shine light outside of, directly below it, and that's, but that's specialty. So the total comes well in under the twenty-two thousand, I think.
Can you, is this, I don't understand, is this, is this, this is the porch here, is this detached from everything? Oh, no, I see, it's on the part of the house, okay, I see, but this is a deck, okay, I'm, I'm seeing more now. Okay, so when that was built, did it-
Six levels, it's two-thirds of the length.
Oh, okay.
See, the, the-
Yeah.
Big plan.
Okay, I get it now.
So what's gray is the existing house now, you see the porch as it is. Yeah, that's all existing, so this, what's out here is proposed, proposed addition to the porch, proposed wood deck, landings, all of these doors here and then this is proposed.
But you're, you're actually increasing the lighting, it's under the twenty-two thousand lumens count, but it's increasing by six, by, by two-thirds over the nine thousand. Right? It's a two-thirds increase, it's, you're increasing by six thousand, over six thousand lumens.
Is that an issue?
I don't know, I'm just pointing it out.
Well, it's an issue if it doesn't affect on a, on a neighbor, yeah.
So none of these lights, I mean, that light is not gonna glare, it's, I can show you a picture of the light.
Well, we usually do get those.
Yeah, the majority of the light that's gonna be lighting the deck is the light that's coming from the, that's actually coming from the house. Right.
Well, you're adding outside lights, which is six, over six thousand.
Here is-
Twelve little halogens.
Here's what the specialty light looks like.
And where's the specialty light?
That's if the barbecue fits. Over the bar, which is over here. And then the lights underneath the cap, underneath the cap, they're LED lights that will cast light down, so that we know-
It's two thousand lumens.
So, so this house was, this foundation is probably over the setback line, that's what Pam said.
Well, Al, I mean, you know my soul, I'm just writing out, and to me, it is just about a cemetery arrangement, I'm sorry, it just, it's over the setback line, it doesn't do anything. We start with this, doing special permits for furniture arrangements within porches, which aren't, you know.
And I would say even if you weren't over the setback line, I would be looking to do even more shield between the houses and stuff, maybe even not even having windows on that side of the porch, you know, so that you don't get, you know, that, that's just a lighting.
But porch is already there.
Right, but in terms of any additional stuff, may, maybe even reducing that. I have, I do have a problem with it being over the setback, because, I mean, we have a setback for a reason, that's voted on by town meeting, that's in the legislative branch of our government, you know, and exceptions for hardships are made, you know, that is, you know, that happens. But I have to agree with Sue, I mean, I'm sorry if you're in love with the furniture, but it's really not, it's not a reason to like to go over the setback.
On the other hand, I think you need to listen to Al, because he frequently has very good suggestions, and maybe this is not the design that will work, but maybe there are some things that could work.
Well, whatever modification, if, if this doesn't work, then if we, as long as we stay inside the setback line, it won't be an issue.
Is that what we-
You still need a special permit to-
But what he's asking is if, if there is-
Special permit from ZBA?
If it has setback, would we, would-
Because the law is not-
Would we say-
No, the house is not conforming on the law. But the question is if the addition now did conform.
Doesn't meet front end, doesn't meet-
Because I don't think it's, I think that they need directions in the future, if we're saying no on this.
Yes, but would we consider then, if, if suddenly that porch addition became compliant?
Yeah, if it, well, didn't go over the line.
Yeah, I, I would, I would say it, my feeling would be, yeah, I could, I'd feel better recommending it to the zoning board of appeals. I'd also look for some reduction in the lighting to, because it, again, she is so close.
It doesn't-
There's six thousand lumens right here.
None of which is directing it to her, right.
Is that, is that, by the way, on this list? That porcelain, the wall mount, that's what it is, three thousand?
How many, what?
It's two.
This could be reduced.
Why don't, why don't you just do one, how, it's, oh, the code only requires one, I mean. That automatically takes, takes about fourteen hundred lumens off of it.
There's under patio wall cap, twelve of them, is that like all around the patio?
Just there.
Yeah, in here and then here, so every four feet.
And they shine down?
Yes, they do.
And how tall are they?
Eighteen inches.
Eighteen inches.
It looks, from what you showed us, it's an all dark sky.
You have a picture of it?
Well, at the end of the cap, they sort of come in with that getting-
You know what strip LED lights look like?
Yeah, where are they? Are they under the lip of the, sort of bench?
Yes, under the lip of the, of the wall, so they're hidden.
But they're not totally hidden, or, or is there a baffle on the front of it? It'd be great to have a picture, actually. Is there a baffle on the front so that they only shine down, or do they shine out?
Well, they only shine down.
Have you seen a picture of it?
I don't know if I included a picture of it.
Has this got a resolved dark sky, certified dark sky?
You know, because the LED strip would be, but it could make it light under the wall and then there's a baffle on it.
I don't think I-
All the other lighting pictures and the pictures on, all the other lighting pictures, including distinct fixtures on the house are provided.
Can we get a cut of that? Can we get a cut of that fixture? It's gotta be a cut-off fixture, it can't be, it can't shine outwards.
Yep.
Okay?
Al, it's extraordinary.
That's what I feel about that judge. How about these guys agree with me?
I try not to suggest, don't even say things like that.
So what would you like to do, to move this along?
I, I, what do you, I turn to the planner, what form is this gonna go in?
Well, one, I mean, this needs to be a part of the decision as well, because this is gonna be something that events our COA.
What is this?
Any, any decision on this application. So it's not only a recommendation to the, to the ZBA under the new bylaw that is being proposed for town meeting, it also needs to imagine the existing COA for the property. So, it looks like there's a couple, couple things that the board is looking at, saying that, for a recommendation to the ZBA, that either the structure and the, the deck need to be inside the setback.
How does, what form does that take? Is that part of our COA?
I view it as part of the COA, just in the, in the final, I mean, there's two things, either two documents, one recommendation memo to the ZBA, and then one is COA, so a regular COA approving a site plan.
Can we give a COA for something we don't really know what-
What they're gonna rule.
What they're gonna do, what if, what if we gave them a COA for, for something that goes right along the setback line, and if it's anything else, they have to come back?
Okay, I, I, I view it differently, I think that we should make our recommendation to the ZBA, which, if I'm hearing correctly, is that there's no further incursion into the setback.
Yes, that would be my recommendation.
Separate thing. If the ZBA comes back and gives them a variance, then they should come back with their design for us to redo or to give them-
But are we able to evaluate the proposal right now so that if the ZBA said that is fine?
So what is-
What if it doesn't say that's fine?
But then they come back.
But it's sort of easy to, to understand, to maybe draft something that shows a wall line and a, the end of the deck at the property line.
Or at the setback.
So that, or, so that COA has flexibility that if the ZBA determines that they need to maintain the setback, everything else is fine. We have comments from David on stormwater.
It doesn't get, it doesn't get us totally out of the conn- because they could deny the whole thing.
Which is why we have to do it.
But then they, then they, they come back.
We can't do our second step until they've made the decision on the first step.
See, I, I just-
We can make a recommendation as we are asked to.
I don't think we, we can, because a special permit needs to come before a site plan, a site plan is a requirement for a special permit. They could kick it back to us saying, "You didn't, you didn't come to a decision, so therefore this application isn't properly in front of us."
So we can't, if we came to a decision that they just have to stick to the, to the setback line, I don't see what's wrong with that.
I don't see what's wrong with it either, but, but, but the corollary part of that is that we're recommending an, an expansion, an addition, in a non-conforming-
But we're saying we're okay with that, yes.
That gets us into zoning board of appeals territory, which really makes me uncomfortable, but I don't see that we have any choice. I mean, this is part of this stupid decision, I'm sorry, David, but this judge was an idiot. That's wrong.
I, I mean, that's why, that's what I said in the first place, that I don't like to do these at all, but, but I think- If we have to, then I, I think if it doesn't go over the setback anymore, it's a very, it's a very small.
And I, I would reduce the, I like the idea of reducing the wall mount to one fixture. If, if we're, so we're issuing the COA, the COA is gonna say that, it's gonna say, "We recommend to the zoning board of appeals X, Y, and Z," is that what it's gonna say? I mean, is that, can we do that?
Well, and then-
But we have it in the past, right?
No, this is the first.
This is the first time through, so we should-
Right, I mean, what you're basically doing is just providing an alternative that here, in your COA, if it meets these sets of conditions, then you have a COA approval, it could easily be something that's administrative if they allow it to go with the setback. It could be either administrative, or you make findings as far as the, I don't mean administrative, made, administrative, me, I mean administrative board, where it doesn't require public here. Or you can make some findings on both proposals and say, "In case you approve this, this is what happens," or-
I don't see that, I don't see this-
If they, if they had approval already from the ZBA, and they said, "Okay, if ZBA says this is okay, now we would need to deal with site plan approval." We would go with this or not go with it? If ZBA had already said it was good.
I, see, I, I, if it stays, if it stays on the setback line, I, I say that, that my vote would be that it's okay, that's why I would say that he could-
I agree, I, I think we all agree about that, Pam, the only question is what form do we communicate that to the zoning board of appeals? Do we, do we convey that in the conditions of approval?
Yeah.
We do, and, and my question to Joe is, is that, can we do that legally? Can we do that legally? Can we incorporate that kind of a, of a ruling, a finding in our conditions, dealing with, with setback encroachment?
That's, that's a whole challenge that hasn't been worked out with the bylaw, because the fact that, with bylaw, if, if the one that we, we drafted gets, gets approved.
But even that, no, that's, that's, that wouldn't apply to this one. Doesn't.
How about if we just do it and see what happens?
Well, how about just, what David says, which I actually think is pretty reasonable.
What do you think?
I think we send it back to the ZBA with our recommendation, and they make that, that administrative, that regulatory decision. And based on that, they come back for site plan approval.
Well, they could just-
It's, you gotta take it step by step, and certain steps have to happen in front of other steps. We, we don't have the authority to tell the, to, to, to tell the ZBA, you have to let them go over the setback.
No, we're not saying that, we're just saying that if they, if the ZBA agrees on that, then we don't have, then they have their COA without any more.
Right, I mean, that would be my recommendation would be-
To, to do.
Because otherwise, I mean, that way you're guaranteeing that they have to come back to us. It seems preferable that a decision gets drafted, that only if it gets amended by the ZBA, that then that comes back.
That's due process.
What about this, David, for a suggestion? What if we write the, the COA that Pam's suggesting, that says, "Look, here's what we, we can go along with this, we draft that out and send it to Joe Bard, and get Joe Bard's blessing, or, or the comments on that document."
That as a procedure.
As a procedure. And, and if he says okay, then it's okay with me.
So you're making this a test case, basically, that this would be the test case?
I, I think that that's making it much more convoluted than-
Well, it's, no, it's, it's making it less convoluted, but he, it's, he, because, because it, we, we don't have to see it again, if the ZBA says okay.
Trying to establish-
That's why it's less, less convoluted. But if Joe Bard says we can't do that, then, then we, then he'll tell us an alternate procedure.
The challenge is that in order for the ZBA to consider a special permit application, where a site plan is also required, that needs to be in hand before they can act on a special permit application. So we could be in this, this loop of, the ZBA saying, "Well, we don't have a site plan, so we don't, we don't know if this is okay."